Aren't finished, I'd like to call the order, the uh, the August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four Laramie Planning Commission meeting, a roll call please.
Evans is absent, Matamore?
Here.
Eisler White?
Here.
O'Toole?
Here.
Prisilic?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
And Moody?
Here.
That's six present, one absent.
All right, um, next is approval of the agenda. Um, I know we have a uh, a change that's been proposed by Derek. Uh, any suggestions on how we proceed?
Yeah, Chair, um, and Commission, if you, if you didn't see, we did uh, notify you, I think Joseph sent the Planning Commission just an email about a request to postpone uh, your only regular agenda item on this meeting. And since it's just a postponement, I would say no need to move that around, but I would, uh, we have two requests. Uh, first would be a request to add is six B Roman nu- Roman numeral double I. Consideration of, um, and discussion regarding funding, uh, the new funding, uh, trial funding program for Planning Commission. And then for item six B triple I, um, consideration, um, of a possible special meeting for Planning Commission. And so I think if we could add those two items just in your regular business, we can do the first one conditionally, so just add those two after.
Well, move, we amend the uh, minutes, I mean, the agenda as Derek specified.
Second.
Second from Jake, all those approving the agenda as presented with the, uh, with the two amendments and six, uh, six B double I and six B double three for, for Derek, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay? None? Okay, agenda amended. Um, next is the um, approval of um, of minutes from the, the August twelfth uh, meeting.
So moved.
Chair.
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 So we need to do another motion to approve the agenda now as amended.
Oh, as amended. That was just the amendments, that's right.
Okay, okay. Um, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
As men, Tom, second, second Jake, all those in favor of the approved, uh, the amended agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay? All right. Agenda is set now. Okay, next is the uh, approval of minutes on the, the August twelfth uh, meeting as presented. Are there any changes or, or?
So moved.
So moved, as, as presented, a second?
A second.
Second from Jake, all those in favor of um, approval of minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay? Minutes approved. Um, next is citizen comments on non-agenda related topics. No action can be taken. Is there anybody out in the audience or on the board that wants to say anything? Seeing none. Uh, next item is Planning Commission and staff reports and comments. Derek, could you?
Chair, Commission, just, just a couple of things. Um, we do have uh, out on the streets, so to speak, the reconnecting communities grant. Um, Philip mentioned it at our last meeting, so that's out there for uh, proposals. Um, so, you know, if you know anyone, feel free to send them our way, but um, no, in all seriousness though, on that, um, you know, that's that project that will look at kind of connecting the west side and west Laramie to kind of east side of Laramie. And just addressing the barriers that we have, like the railroad, the interstate, the Laramie River, just the, the territorial park, all those pieces of the puzzle there and how we can better connect those neighborhoods. And so, um, it's gonna be a, I think, a really interesting and good project for the community. So just note that that is out there. Um, and so if anybody has questions, you can always come talk to us. Uh, secondly, just in the month of September, uh, planning staff, code administration staff, environmental health staff, code enforcement staff, and the Planning Commission will be at the farmer's market in this time of September. Um, you'll probably get an email here shortly from uh, Robin to Spain, um, in our office, just looking for some times from all of you that where you could maybe be there for an hour or so. You'll have staff there the whole time as well. And really, this is just an opportunity to engage the public, um, and really let them know for your sake what the Planning Commission does. But, you know, for those other days, really what else happens within the Community and Economic Development Department? Um, one of council's main goals this last year and this year is just general community engagement and providing information, education, and opportunity to interact with government. So, um, we're trying to do that, something a little bit different. We'll let you know after September and October how successful it was.
Do, what, what day was it? Do you have a date set?
Uh, for, for which one?
For, for us being involved?
That one is, let me just look at my calendar to make sure I'm telling you the right date. The twenty-seventh of September.
That's the last one of the year.
Last one of the year, yep.
And that's, that's between three o'clock and five o'clock.
Three and seven is when it, when it is, so, uh, but yeah. Don't have to be there the whole time at all, just if you can be there for even a little bit of time, I think just be a great opportunity. So, and if you can't be there, it's okay too, not, not the end of the world.
Is, is, is this in response to, to the public saying, boy, we'd, we'd like to see something like this happen, or is it just part of a general outreach, hope and dream?
I think at a couple areas, one, council goal, so trying to fulfill that goal maybe in a way that we don't do it typically. Number two, you've heard us say it. Getting the public involved in what we're doing here is really difficult. And when we don't hear what the public has to say, it's hard for us to make decisions, right? You, you all sit up here as a commission, our council is in the same boat. We can, we present projects to you and provide you a professional recommendation, but also if you don't hear from the public on things, you know, sometimes you don't get that other side of the, of, of, of what's actually happening or what maybe someone in that neighborhood hears. And so, what we really want to do is just provide an opportunity to maybe get some of that in a, in a more just organic manner. But also to provide them information, know that they can come here, know that they can come to our offices, know that they can submit public comments, and just really try to, you know, try to do that. And, you know, maybe through that process though too, maybe we learn things that are helpful for us in projects in the future, or who knows? I mean, it's.
At, at the table, could you have something that really points out bullets, like from a planning perspective, what, what the main things that, 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 that we're trying to, to accomplish, like, you know, affordable housing or urban renewal, or, or, you know, give, give them some, or, you know, um, yeah, how, what's, what's West Laramie gonna be in ten years? You know, what, what things are important to the community that this body is involved in, in the planning department?
So, one, I would say we can, yeah. Um, I think really the, the meetings, the, the, this kind of opportunity is kind of open-ended. Our, our plan is to have definitely some information available, some of the big things we've worked on, like the growth plan, maybe the Casper Rock for Protection Plan, we'll have a few maps and some things like that. Um, you know, what I would suggest is this, if you, if you have some ideas that you think, like, just like that, the bullet list, I think it's a great idea.
Like a question, hey?
Absolutely.
How, you know, Laramie is now thirty-one thousand people, well, how many people would you like to see in, in Laramie in the next ten years? You know, some, some points that, that elicit conversation between somebody passing by the table and, and.
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, if there's something you would like, like, shoot us just a quick email, we can figure out a way to incorporate maybe some questions or just, you know, some sort of engagement, you know, because that's really what we're trying to do, engage the people, right? And so, yeah, we're open to some ideas if you have got some.
Donald?
Would you be willing to put up a banner just to encourage people to approach the table? I, as I walk by those tables, if it just looks like a bunch of the top halves of humans sitting behind a table, and I'm not quite sure what they're up to, I, I don't approach them. But if there's some, um, kind of come on to indicate, uh, what your approach could be to those folks, like a banner, this is what we do, or, you know, our questions, I think that would be very helpful, but that involves money.
Yeah, and I think we, you know, we're, we'll talk about it at the one item about having like a little tent and some things, but also we're gonna, I think we're gonna build, put some posters together and some things to try to like draw people in, right? Not just have some people sitting there, you know, at the table soliciting advice. What is that? You know, like, that, that, we, that's not really what we're doing, but I think, like you said, we were, we're, we're even talking about putting maybe some like little A-frame signs with like, come talk to us about housing, U R A, something, you know, to try to bring people in there maybe with some hot button issues to, like you said, get you to the table, right?
Or a side visioning project would be.
A side visioning would be another great one, yep, absolutely.
Just as a suggestion, you're talking small, I suggest a really big photograph of a bottle of beer.
Take free but misspell it.
When we get to that item, you'll see that I, I don't think I'm gonna be, I can't purchase food or drinks, and so I think, but just saying.
It's, it's just a photograph, yeah, just a photograph of a bottle of beer, that's all it is.
I don't want a bunch of people paying yet thinking they're gonna get beer when they show up to the table, though. Just saying.
All right. You'll have his attention.
That's good.
Any other questions from, uh, from Commissioners?
I have one, in terms of the connecting communities, uh, how old is the walk bridge over the Union Pacific Line and who owns that bridge?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Um, I wanna s- Todd, I was gonna say, I'm gonna say Todd Fieser, Assistant City Manager might know way more than I do.
I don't actually have the age of it, Chair, through you, but um, the bridge is owned by the Union Pacific, but it's part of a lease and maintenance agreement with the city of Laramie.
And do we check, it's, it's just been there for as long as I've been in town, and I just wonder, does that need to be replaced sometime in the foreseeable fut- future, and uh, on whose back is the replacement?
Honorable Chair, through you, the discussion about that has come up through different offices here just recently, that, you know, it's a vital pedestrian connect, connector for this community. In fact, I think we're short two pedestrian connectors over the railroad as it is anyway. Um. You know, we've had some places that have been hit that we've repaired down low at the bottom of the stairs and done some different repairs. Just recently, we filled a hole at the top of the ramp to make sure that we weren't collecting water, but um, I would assume potentially the railroad's doing the engineering study to make sure that it's safe over the rail, which is their most important piece, but I couldn't verify any of that for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Derek, one question for you, um, what's the status of the cap update and any modifications on ordinances and that's what?
Yeah, so if you remember, last year we completed the Casper Rock for Protection Plan, that was the joint plan with the county and the city. And so, since that time, uh, really, we, from, in the planning side of things, we haven't done a whole lot of work on, you know, recommended code changes. Um, it's mostly been just a staffing, you know, having the time to do it. Um, also at that time, if you haven't met Jay Smith, Jay Smith's our um, environmental, uh, what, hold on, water and environmental coordinator at the city, he's under the, in the city manager's office. In charge of Monolith Ranch, Bath Ranch, and then all the Casper Rock for Protection stuff. And really, last year, the purchase of the Bath Ranch really took a lot of his time away. Um, it is something that's on our plan, we would like to get moving and working on some of the code changes that came out of that plan on the city side. It's really like kind of the logical next step. Um, if you remember, we immediately, right after the adoption of that, went through and did the rezoning project, so we actually, we've adjusted the boundary line to match with what's in the Casper Rock for Protection Plan, so that, the boundary line has been updated, but the additional regulations haven't. So that's really where we're at right now. Um, you know, it's something that we know we need to work on it, it's balancing that between a lot of the, all the other things we have going on right now, so.
Any, like, just sort of far out deadline? I, I, I never operate well without a deadline.
I'm gonna be really honest, any deadline I give you probably would be just a guess. I, I really, I, you know, in all honesty, I really do think that we will start to have those discussions and figure out what we want to start to work on probably this fall. Um. If you remember, one of the things you probably heard me consistently say, a lot of the codes that we have in place at the city already align with a lot of the changes, and that really the lift at the county side was a lot more than a lift at the city side, and I still hold that true and that, um, but there are changes, I think, you know, that we've talked about, and I, like, you know, they're gonna come at some point following that plan, so.
Should we harass Jay mostly?
No, I, you, I, I can harass Jay for you, I mean, you might not wanna harass Jay.
No, I'm not.
Jay's bigger than me, but no, no, I, Jay and I have had, you know, conversations about this, about, you know, really finding the time to start working through that, um, and really deciding what we're gonna actually, you know, start modifying.
Yeah, Jay's got a lot, he's got the, you know, monitoring program, and he's, he's, he's working on, he's working on things that came up off, uh, spiraled out of the cap, so, and it's not like things aren't happening.
And I, and I think that that's always, you know, it's the balance that we see with everything that we do within, whether it's my office or any of the other offices at the city of Laramie, is that balance of, you know, what do we work on based upon the amount of time that we have, and maybe, you know, we found that the well monitoring program seemed to be something we had some momentum on, and I think that that's why, you know, for instance, Jay has spent a lot of his time working on that, uh, versus maybe not focusing on the code changes. But also too, you know, we do evaluate kind of that balance of, you know, is it more important to work on the, the wells or the code changes and so, yeah.
Leave it up to you guys, yeah, Jay.
Yeah, it's basically the same question Chris just posed, but for the joint growth plan.
Okay.
Is that about insane?
No, that, that one, we, we, I can give you a different update on that. Uh, so, we hope at the end of September to have the intergovernmental agreement before you for consideration and discussion. The, if you remember, the intergovernmental agreement was the second part of kind of like, I'm gonna call it three parts of the process. First was the plan, which we've adopted, the intergovernmental agreement is this agreement of the city and the county are gonna agree to, through the agreement, that we're gonna work on the following, whatever items that come before you. Because remember, the growth plan has lots and lots of things that we could work on, and so we're gonna try to narrow that focus down, bring that before you, get that signed, and then we hope start working on the code changes related to that. So, that would be part three. So the intergovernmental agreement is gonna kind of outline some of the main topics and issues that we're gonna really focus on in terms of like, we will change codes related to this, we'll adjust regulations over this. Now, we still have to work through those regulations, right? We have to adopt the actual ordinances or regulatory changes to like at the county level, they do that by resolution. They have to, we have to go through that process still. But the intergovernmental agreement gives us a path forward, and in theory, the two governing bodies agreeing to, yes, this is what we're gonna work on out of all the things in that plan, here's the set of things that we're gonna start with. So, so we're hoping, it's been a lot of back and forth, uh, just of our attorneys and the county's attorneys, and then our staff and the county's staff, and then realizing that it's not how we like the language because it's confusing, and then we have to go back and revamp it, and it's, it's just takes, it's just taking a lot of time, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, no more questions, so we'll move on to disclosures, export to communications, potential conflicts of interest, anybody out there need to confess? Seeing none? Man, um, move on to, um, new business, uh, CUP dash twenty-three dash oh eight, four twenty-nine, Bill Nye Avenue, Laramie Lofts, multi-family dwelling complex, Joe.
Chair, Commission, um, as you all might have seen from the, the email earlier today, um, we are requesting, or the applicant is actually requesting postponement of this item. Um, throughout the last couple of weeks, there's been more information that have come in light, um, with the applicant, and financially speaking, they'd like to make a few changes to their, um, product before they bring it before you. Now, we do have this here, so let me just go over some of it while we have you all here, um, and Chair, by all means, stop me at any point if we, we belabor.
You have five minutes.
Okay, perfect. Um, so, the Laramie Lofts is a project that we've been working on for a while, it's on a one point eight-three acre lot, um, behind the Maverick, um, gas station. Um, it was, it is, um, a mixture of efficiency and two-bedroom units. Um, and it's gonna come out to around ninety-four units. Um, those are things that we do not believe will change, um, with this next submittal, but it's something that we had, um, that is exciting for us, ninety-four units is a lot. Um, this is within, uh, the B-two zoning district, um, the B-two zoning district, um, does allow for multifamily development, but it is primarily a business district. Um, so, we're coming before you guys, um, as dictated in code with a conditional use permit for the approval of, um, a multifamily complex. Now, just so that you guys know, this is on B-two, but directly adjacent to it, it is R-three, um, R-three is our highest density multifamily zoning district, uh, and if it had just been across the street, this would have been prevented by right. Now, um, additionally, um, this area will look different in the future. Um, there is the, um, minor arterial of Bill Nye that will connect from Third Street all the way up to behind the, um, the high school. So this is an area that we believe is appropriate for such development. As far as like circulation of traffic and logistics, um, there will likely be, with this conditionally use permit, some requests for some less stringent standards on, um, you know, either parking or some balcony things that are, um, required by code, but we are allowed to change with minor administrative modifications. With a site plan, with the conditional use permit, we will, um, bring it before you all to make that determination. Um, so it's not a full variance, but it is, um, minor administrative modification, so to speak. But yeah, in the effort to stay brief, um, about this project and not get too far into things that we, we don't know yet, um, I will leave it at that, but I am open for questions if, if you need to.
Tom?
Uh, Chair, I, my only, uh, question is, what are we doing with Bill Nye to get it from, uh, Third Street to Seventeenth or Fifteenth? Cause I know from Seventeenth, we're going with USAC funding sometime next year, hopefully, and Bill, Bill Nye there, but I think you'll have a bottleneck if we don't put the whole thing in somehow or another, so, is there any talk about that? It won't be a part of this CUP, but it's something to consider, so.
Right, right. Any chance that there's anybody from Public Works on, online? No?
I'll, 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 I'll go after this one here, um, just really quick. So, what, what we should be seeing is construction of Bill Nye Avenue and associated infrastructure, essentially from the Boulder Drive area, kind of south of the high school, all the way into Corthell, uh, the Corthell neighborhood there to start out with. Then the next segment, which is from Corthell to Seventeenth Street, Eighteenth Street, right in there, um, is kind of that next phase, uh, what the plan is to allow for USAC funding to continue to build up on that portion of it. Um, I think, as we've heard in over the last like eight, seven, eight years, as that project continues to get into design, it just continues to cost more. And that's been largely the issue in constructing Bill Nye Avenue, it was just the high cost of construction for not just the street, remember when we build the street, we've got to make sure we have water sewer lines properly located, but really like for this project, that happens to be stormwater management is a large component of that project, and it's complicated and it's costly. And so with that, uh, that's probably the biggest issue we've seen. Um, twenty-five is when it's supposed to start, so next year. And then I think when you look, as it, if you, as you come west, you have a portion of Bill Nye that already exists, built to the proper width. Um, then once you get to Ninth Street, you have a portion that'll go into the kind of, it's kind of south, I'm just gonna say generally of some of those storage unit complexes that are located far over there, and then you have a portion of the road that comes up along by Corona Village, and then crosses Spring Creek. Um, that lot, that probably will also become part of USAC, a USAC project or some other, if we can get a grant or something like that. Um, you know, that's logically where that is. Um, if you remember, uh, the city of Laramie and the Spring Creek Village, uh, we were in a lawsuit with them, and, uh, we were, man, win, we didn't lose, I guess is what I would say. Um, and, but we, but we, we, we have the, we have the land for the road, we have the ability to put the road in, ability to put the bridge in, make all the connections we need, um, but the, the cost isn't on the developer. And so, that'll be something that, uh, per that agreement that was signed in whatever it was, seventy-two and seventy-one, that's where the ruling was, and so, you know, we will be developing that street and, you know, building that out as a city. And so, I mean, you know, the framework is there, it's just, it, it's gonna be all about funding for, for the construction, so.
Uh, so, so these, these two, um, uh, proposed units are four, they're four stories, aye?
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, you sent a, a PDF that was of elevations, which typically are kind of like what, what it might look like on the outside. It, it didn't, it didn't come through on my computer, I didn't know whether anybody else had that problem.
Quite similar to the, the point, and look.
Okay, yeah, I was just kind of curious how it looked, I, you know, seeing before.
That's what they have right now. But that might change a little bit.
All right, that looks, that looks nice. I hate to see him like, look like those, those block houses that are on the south side of, that Bill Nye's gonna go by, you know, where it's just some nasty looking thing.
And Chair, through you, uh, are, in our discussion with, with the developer, they are cognizant of that, and some of our requirements have been put in place in order to alleviate some of that.
The visuals.
Yeah.
Right on, thank you. Okay, so, is there a motion?
Chair.
For, for the next, for the next meeting?
Just for public comment, can you open for?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, thanks. Uh, is there any public comment regarding, um, the postponement of the CUP and the project in general? Um, seeing none? Uh, last, uh, comments from staff? Seeing none? Is there a motion?
I move that we postpone CUP dash twenty-three dash oh eight to, uh,
The next.
What is the, what is the applicant's wish? How long does he think he's gonna need?
September ninth.
September ninth? All right, we, I won't be here then, but we postpone it till September ninth.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jake, all those in favor of postponing until September ninth, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay? Okay, we will, oh, pick this up at the next, uh, next meeting. Uh, the next item of business is the, um, discussion on the trial funding program, policy and procedures, Derek?
Chair, Commission, um, so, what we have before you is, and I, and I sent this in a, in a document to you by email, um, and it's a, so basically a two-page document that kind of provides you an idea of what this new trial funding program is related to the Planning Commission. As you'll see in the memo that was provided, uh, the city council has approved funding for public information and activities of the city's boards and commissions. Um, for the Planning Commission, three thousand dollars, uh, really to be used, and it says here at the, kind of in the memo, you know, expenses that align with the scope and duties and responsibilities of the boards and the commissions and the city council's adopted goals, approved by the majority vote of the board. Uh, must be approved by both the staff liaison and the department head to ensure the expenditures meet the requirements of the pub, use of public funds. We can't buy food and beverage, sorry, no beer. Um, advertisements and public information materials must be approved by the staff liaison and department.
Advertisements and public information materials must be approved by the staff liaison and department. And meet city policies for public information and social media. Support staff will properly track and report expenditures through the use of this project code, which is an internal item. And that we really, any of these required materials be purchased directly by the city and maintained is kind of public stock. And that, you know, they don't go to a certain commissioner or something like that. And really, as you see, there's some examples of, of, of what they're talking about. Our newspaper articles, advertisements about, you know, initiatives, matters of the community interest. Advertisements of public meetings, open houses or other educational or print media, radio or television, informational flyers, advertisements. All of that there for stations at public events like farmers markets, freedoms, has a birthday. And five promotional materials that serve a public purpose or promote an educational initiative. And what it, what I would say for tonight is. One, I, I wanted, I wanted you to have this policy. I want you to be thinking about, is there a way in which this board and commission can do things? That can use these funds that we've been given to potentially help you as a board and commission achieve your duties and goals. Right? We don't have to decide anything tonight. The one thing that I do have that I would like you to decide on tonight. And I'll talk about that in a moment is, is one, a specific item, but I think, you know, for this boards and for this board and commission. Be creative. Think outside the box. I mean, maybe you guys want to do a music video. I don't know, right? Like, I'm not sure, but I mean. I think, I think really the, the city council here is simply trying to provide you an avenue through some funding. To, to engage the public here, right? And so whether we think maybe these farmers markets are successful or there's other opportunities that you think would be great. What I would suggest is this, give this some thought. Like I said, we don't have need an immediate answer. Feel free to reach out to me if you have some ideas. And then I think what we would do is if we do have some of those ideas, we would just bring them back as an agenda item, discuss them. And kind of follow this procedure about adopting and, and going through the process of doing it, right? And so, you know, I, I look at this as an opportunity to potentially help you. And maybe make your volunteer job just a little bit better. So. With that, the one, the one thing that we did bring and we would, I would like to just discuss with you related to this funding. Is to purchase a tent. So like a, just a pop up tent. With the city of Laramie's logo on it and a table with the city of Laramie's logo on it, like a table cover really is what it is. And some sandbags for our time at the community, at the farmer's market coming up. We believe that just having something one to protect you from the rain or snow in September. Just kidding. It's actually happened before, just so you know. We think would be a good idea, but it would just provide us an opportunity to, one, use some of these funds. See how they can be used, but it's something that I think that this board and commission, we can use for other activities. Whether when we're doing planning efforts, so like comprehensive plans or neighborhood plans, the reconnecting community grant. You know, we anticipate having additional public meetings and we can use some of this stuff for those types of things as well.
And so meetings in other places than in here?
Um, it would be like when we've done like open houses. So if you attended like the West Side meeting that we did, uh, just this, this last year. You know, held at the, held at the Lincoln Community Center, we were outside, this would allow us, we could use the tent, you know, to. You know, provide us some shade in a certain spot or something like that. So.
Question. So there's no other agent, city agency or group that has a tent already? You know, is this like the first tent that the city has ever had?
No, they're. Good question. There are. We actually don't have just a very generic city of Laramie one. From our side of things, we think it's more, a little more versatile. The, uh, we do like the Laramie Police Department. If you've been to the farmer's market recently, they've got one. There's a few others that have some tents that are specific to their like department, Parks and Rec has one. So we just feel like the generic version would be really well used. And so. So with that, and since we're kind of in new territory. What it says here in the policy is that this is something that would need to be approved by a vote of the majority of the board. And so we, we've done, you do have to have a motion. I will, I will let you know that we've, we've done some research and for a sturdy tent and for Laramie's wins. With the logos printed on it and the matching everything. We believe that we're going to be looking at six hundred and fifty eight dollars and ninety three cents. So. If we were given the ability to just maybe we round that number up to like seven hundred, like no more than seven. That way, if something changes in the meantime between now and your approval, if you were to give that, we can at least buy a tent. So really, so that's really what we're asking today would be to purchase a tent and this table cover and the sandbags. Or some public engagement for the planning commission.
Because I got another question. So is this, is this a planning commission? Three thousand dollars for this commission or is it planning department and commission?
This is for you. This is for the planning commission. So you would, if you approve this, you'd have two thousand three hundred dollars for your music video.
But, but, but whatever, whatever logo is on it is, is Laramie Planning Commission?
We're going to just do city of Laramie. We're, we're, we're really, we're going to keep it city of Laramie. So that way it can be a little bit more functional versus the city of Laramie Planning Commission, because I think that that. If we want to use it for anything else, it just, it just makes it difficult and I don't think is probably the best use. So.
Would seven hundred be enough to cover signage to go with it? Or is there other venues for that?
We got, we're making signage. We could do that on our own. It's easy. Yeah.
Can we get a picture of a little bottle of beer for Donald?
I will, I will, I will print little pictures of bottles of beer for.
I need determine the person to determine what a little bottle of beer looks like.
Sure. Let me know. Let me know what, how many ounces or.
The fine print of this motion.
Yeah. This is going to be, council's really going to be interested in this motion.
So I moved that we.
Discussion on, on any other, any other things or, or that this is the best use of this, this pot of gold. It's the only option.
The option that's been presented. I haven't heard any other options.
I'd just like to thank Derek for. Having this idea because it had never occurred to us. So I appreciate the gesture.
What? So that remain, there's an amount of money to be made after that. Can we just use that as discretion and? As things before, will you bring us other suggestions as it's sort of been open?
We, if we come up with something, we'll bring it to you if you, but I think what I'm asking you as a commission, if you have ideas that you think could be valuable. Please bring them to me so we can make sure that they fit the policy, but then also help you enact those, you know, maybe like I said. You know, you guys all get together and say, we would like to do some advertisements on the, on the radio or in the newspaper or something like that, like. We will help you pepper those, but then we actually have a budget to do the publications or to buy radio ad space or, you know. Those are the things that we think are, you know, and I think that what council is trying to do is to give you a little bit of flexibility and ability to do something. That helps engage the public or furthers, you know, your mission, you know, if we're working on a project and you feel like some additional public meetings or something, right? Like an open house or something like, maybe we, that helps us rent a space, right? Really, I think council also, I'm going to say this is a pilot program. They've never done this before. And so I think that they're looking to boards and commissions to try to be creative. And so what I would say is this is. Try to figure, let's try to figure out a way to spend three thousand dollars this year.
Just till, till December, then it starts over in January?
This would be fiscal year. So we have until July next year to use it up. So. And, and you know, maybe it's, maybe you, maybe we work on a, when we work on a. Let's say it's the reconnecting communities grant and you feel that you really want to get that information out to the public. Maybe we, you know, take a, take an ad out in GQ magazine or something, because that's what all the Laramie people read. I don't know. Like I, I have no idea. I'm just trying to be. But I think that that's really what the, what the council is trying to get you as a board and commission to do is. Is there avenues with a little bit of funding that can help get your, get the, get the things that you do? And, and maybe it's, you just want people to know about what you do. Maybe we do some, some, some ad, ads on the radio that explain the duties of the planning commission over the next.
Planning in general.
Or planning in general. And like. I think we have a lot of room, generally speaking, and coming up with ideas. And that's, that's why I want you to think about it. I have some ideas, but also I think I would, I would really like to hear what you all have in terms of that. So.
All right. Any other questions for Derek?
I think the check top idea is very good.
You know, I do want to learn how to tap guns, but that's for another day and maybe another life. Is there a motion?
So moved, move where you proved that, proved the seven hundred dollars. Uh, the full amount of seven hundred so he can pick up.
Is within that seven hundred. Okay. Second by. And all those in favor of the motion? To designate seven hundred dollars for a tent and various things for the farmer's market? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none? You are funded. All right. Thank you very much, Derek. That's, that's a nice thing. And it's, I think it gets our brain going in a, in a different direction. Or in, in a variety of directions and sort of, you know, gives us something else to do besides approve. Fence heights.
And I think, you know, thanks to council too, to, to think about trying to help the boards do their job, right? Like, and I think that that's ultimately what they're getting at. So.
So the next item on agenda is consideration of a special Laramie plant, planning commission meeting. That's as much as I know about it. Okay, Derek.
Chair and commission. So this item is another item that I, I, I walked on today. So late. Late last week, we were, I was having some email and phone conversations with applicants. Associated with the Grandview Heights Estates Phase One Final Plat. And the developers of the potential W C D A funded affordable housing project that's located in that plat. Really, the long story short, it is, is that we were told that they, if. That they would like to have final plat approval by the end of this month. The difficulty in that is just the way the meetings land. We are, we're under review of everything. Everything's going fine. It's just the way meetings land. October first is when city council would consider this item. We anticipated bringing this final plat to you at the end of September and then on, in October, doing the final plat before city council. We were informed last week, late last week, that that doesn't work for them. So with that, this morning, I had a phone conversation with the developer of the Overland project is what their, their group is, Overland Group. About timing. And really what would work optimally is if we were able to set a special meeting of the planning commission. For September sixteenth, which then would allow us to go to city council on September seventeenth. We don't do very many special meetings. Most of the time for planning commission, when you do a special meeting is if we have like a comp plan or something like that. And we, you know, just want to spend time focusing on one thing. Also too, I would not typically bring forward a special meeting to this group, just being respectful of your time. If this was not an affordable housing project. I would say that what, where we're at within our community housing is probably priority number one. And I think that this is a project that I would like to see done. And this simply helps them get through the plating process in a timely fashion. To give you just an idea, like I said, plating and everything in the final plat review typically for planning commission and councils. Most, most of the time pretty easy. This one wasn't a controversial one, so I don't think that anything is unique there. Typically, when this goes to city councils, just on their consent agenda. By moving it to the sixteenth, we still meet all of our notice requirements. Nothing is different except for calling for a special meeting. So we would still notify the public. They still get the mailing. It's just that we would have an additional meeting in September. And so. A couple of things on that, just. We can be flexible in terms of the special meeting. So there's no necessary, there's not a requirement that it's at four thirty. It could be held at four thirty. What I would recommend is potentially some different times. Just to try to accommodate other people's schedules if we needed to. So what I would, what I would say is just when I was looking, you know, at calendars and things. We could even look potentially like at a noon meeting to try to like capture your lunchtimes or something like that, if you felt it was more convenient. Or we could look to your regular time at four thirty or later even at six or something like.
What day is it?
Sixteenth is a Monday, so it's your normal Monday. And so with that, I guess, maybe what I would. Open to the chair is maybe just some informal discussion about if that day even works or if it's even possible. That's always, that's the first hurdle, I think. Second hurdle would be finding a time that works for everybody. So according to the applicant, they're, they said they'll just make whenever if we make this work. So.
Okay. So anyways, discussion amongst us as to whether we can make it. I, I can say after, you know, doing this for three years, this is the first time that there's been a special meeting. So it's, it's definitely not a, you know, it's not common.
I think we need to help Derek and the developer on this thing. Need to start to put your money where your mouth is when it comes to affordable housing. So I think Monday at four thirty. Just a regular time seems to fit for most people. I will be back by then too.
Donald?
I agree. It is important. I'm free all that day. So either noon or the four thirty slot works for me.
Yeah, either for me.
Jake, John? Sylvie, any, any comments there? Are you good?
Forty works for me too.
Okay.
Either works for me.
All right. Four, four thirty works for me. So. Is there a motion? We got.
So, so I would ask you to set, to, to make a motion to hold a special meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission at four thirty.
I have a question about the W C D A. Would these be rentals or sales?
Now, this is a, this is a rental project. Yeah. So this would be affordable housing related to, you know, rental units. So.
Does the W C D A have any price ceilings or?
This is a full. Thirty percent AMI. It's, it's restricted for, you know, I think twenty years plus another twenty, so up to forty years of restricted. You know, in terms of the rental rates, they restrict the rental rates so that it doesn't increase too quickly. It's not free market. And through W C D A, that's how those companies are able to absorb that. Cost in terms of not receiving at market rent. So, yeah.
And that, as I recall, there are restrictions on sales. So the developer goes to sell it to somebody, those restrictions carry on.
Hundred percent. None of this, they, they, you can transfer ownership, like right, a different investment company could potentially purchase it. But if, if you look up this group, that is not their model. This group is actually a long term holder. They typically hold their, their, their products even beyond their forty years sometimes. So. Yeah. So it's a, you know, it's about as good as you can get when it comes to keeping, keeping prices down for the long term. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. John, John?
Can you provide us with some links or additional information about W C D A processes, just so that we have that on the mind?
Absolutely. Yes. No, it's a, it, that's a really good question. The, the W C D A has a webpage, which is pretty easy to find, but I can, I'll shoot you over a link. On their webpage, there's actually a lot of information about. On their webpage, there's actually a lot of information about kind of the programs they have, but also what they're trying to achieve. Um, and so it's 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 actually really informative. So and I would say after you look at that, if you have more questions, like come in and talk to us, you know, it's a it's one of the great things through the state of Wyoming that allows for a lot of these affordable housing projects to kind of get over that funding hump when it comes to developing affordable housing, you know, you're you're not getting the market rate for your rental. And so because of that, you got to figure out a way to bridge that that financial gap.
So our approval, though, will be about the unit itself, right? It's not about this funding stream. I mean, that's good context and information about how to achieve bigger goals in the community. But what we're ultimately going to approve is not anything to do with their loan, but rather what they're proposing in terms of the structure and and you know, you know, by the bell and such, right? So this is background, but it's not the motion or the approval.
Correct. Chair, Commission, all you're gonna be considering the final plat. The Grandview Heights Estates Final Plat. You'll actually hear, I will provide little information actually about this actual affordable housing project other than this final plat plat's the one plat's one of the multifamily lots in the subdivision, which is where the project is going.
Does city council then consider the other component?
Actually, no. Um, it's a by right use. Uh, currently, they uh are under review. Actually, comments are due any moment now or they're they're due at five. And so they'll actually get their comments tomorrow. Their their project meets all of our city requirements for the most part, and it's
So it's up to us to get it done, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's really the final plat, just getting approved so that they have a lot to build on. And so and the funding through WCDA was granted this last cycle. So we were one of four projects in the state of Wyoming granted. So the funding's secured and everything. So it's meets their obligations in terms of control of land and there's like milestones that they achieve. So.
Donald?
Do these ever run into headwinds from private landlords?
As in, like?
Do private landlords object to stuff like this kind of on principle or because they consider it's intruding on their businesses?
Yeah, I mean, we we've heard it before. Um, I haven't heard it recently. Um, there's a complex that's located at the corner of Beach and Glacier Street, just due north of this. That project, it's like twelve-ish years old. We did hear a little bit about that at at that uh at that stage. The only thing, the only thing that I would say is we don't hear as much about it. And the reason why is it's really focused on a different market level. You're looking at a a group of people that are looking for rentals that are below market and at a reduced market rate. And so most people that have rentals, they're renting at market, right? They're they're trying to get their most money. And so there isn't as much conflict. What I would say is the people that we hear the most is if you have a really, really low price point rental, which I'm gonna say is probably a rental that has maybe some issues. That's where you see the competitiveness. And it's not a fair competitiveness though, right? There's one unit that's that way because of condition and another unit that way because it's being subsidized. And so that might not necessarily be a bad thing if you have more of those lower units that are a better quality.
Right. So um is there is there any any motion that we need to do here?
So just to be sure how we word this, we call for a special meeting for a specific project without a number or just call for a special meeting?
Call for a special meeting.
Okay.
September sixteenth at four thirty.
Call for a special meeting, September sixteenth at four thirty in these premises? Of the Laramie Planning Commission.
But he's confused.
Is there a second?
A second.
Jake, second. All those in favor of a special meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission on the sixteenth of September at four thirty, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay? Okay, it looks like we're got some more work to do.
Well, we gotta earn that free grant.
All right, I know, nothing, nothing is for free. All right, so is there a motion? That's all on the agenda, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye? Aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? We're adjourned. All right. Thanks, everybody.
What are the odds of five? Capturing this developer and keeping him in town for a while.